We'll start with invocation. We'll ask Councilman Bartley to do the invocation, please. Thank you, Councilman. Do not have the meeting minutes? Are there any questions about the meeting minutes as presented to the council members? There are no questions for about the meeting minutes? All right, entertain most to approve the meeting minutes as presented. We're moving to second it. If there are no more discussion, not all in favor of approving the meeting minutes as presented, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Finishing the ayes, aye. And most carries. Item number one on unfinished business is board appointments. That stays open if anyone is interested in the audience or that watches us live or may see this or hear about it in the paper. Any board that you're interested in being a part of, we're interested in you being on that board. That being said, I don't have anything of any new appointments today. I will move to. Y'all like it? Y'all can hit it, right? Yeah, alright, that'll work. That being said, on the item number two with our architect RFQ request for qualifications, we don't have any updates on that yet. Once we make the selects on the architect, we'll have that announced and it'll be on unfinished business. Any questions about that? No. Alright, item number one on new business, board replacement at City Park. Council members, of course, baseball season is upon us. They're already in mid swing. I think everybody started the game already, bad games for softball, baseball, and all the little leagues. So, that being said, the park is in full swing. This year, we had a number of bulbs that are out. They've been out for quite some time, but we've been able to manage. However, there's some bulbs that need to be replaced on the park so that way they're able to have games and able to move forward. One of the quotes that we got was from the Little League, well, not Little League, but from a company that I sent, that was in you guys' package, for approximately nine thousand dollars to replace thirty-two lights. That includes the lift, that includes the bulbs, and the only thing that does not include is the bayonets, which because we may have to have more than one, but he didn't want to put that in the quote because they maybe did. So, that being said, in order to go ahead and get the lights, I would recommend that he move forward with giving the bulb replacement. And the quote again, let's say it was for approximately, anybody got it in common?
Eight thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars.
Eight thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Next question.
That replaced thirty-two lights. It's based on the number of lights. So, all of them had some lights that were out. I think he went to all the fields, but the baseball field is the one that's the worst off. Two questions? Yes. How long did they take them to take? He said it should take them about two days. Take them two days? That's what he, that's what he came up with. These type of lights? No, it's not LED light. LED light. It's not LED light. He said the LED lights are, would not be a good fit for us because our holes are not, I don't want to say not new, but he said that the bulbs that we needed to replace was the same of what we got. Oh, okay, alright. Good question, another question. Alright, there's most on the floor.
Second motion. On the lights.
Alright, there's an emotion on, motion of second to accept the bid from DSL Electric. And the reason why we look at DSL Electric, there's only ones in the area that really do lights. Alabama Power doesn't do lights. And they do the lights for Gordo's field in Gordo, Alabama. So, DSL Electric is the one that we can't get. Somebody else is fine with the prices.
It's totally on one thing. Oh, the platform. This is the, I see the company in there now. The pavilion down here. The, the pavilion down here. It's keep rolling up to it. And kids keep going out there further and further. But this shit gonna be snakes, snakes here, snakes there. So, can we get somebody to clean it all back, to wipe it out? Pavilion down here. It start rolling up to it, not in front of, on the other side of it. And being used a lot, so we just get somebody, somebody come in with those or something, or a tech or something. They had to push back, around at least up thirty feet or something. Open the, they need to open the door on the backside. So, we're talking about the pole.
Yeah, that's fine, I know, that's not issue. But like I said, we, that's no problem, but like I said, we got it on. But I'm fine, I'm fine with it. I don't feel that issue with that. We might be able to do, might bring somebody else in, I don't know, but either way, we can get that. Alright, there's motion of second on the floor to accept the bid for DSL Electric. To replace, to provide and install up to thirty-five bulbs scattered across ball fields. And to provide and install any bayonets, a blast, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. Balance, there we go, balance, as needed. If there's no more discussion, we'll move to vote. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Finishing the ayes, aye. And most carries. The ambulance service update. So, the last meeting, council meeting that we had, we had a consensus of what was going on with the ambulance service. There were three different tiers of service that we could excel from North Star, North Star Ambulance Service, which is a nonprofit company. The other one, the one, Pickens County Ambulance Service, whatever they are. They're a nonprofit that run out of, that run out of care in Alabama. When we last adjourned, you guys, we agreed on six thousand dollars on a monthly basis to see where, how far we could make it stretch out and go, based on the tier of service that was selected at that time. Since that time, there was a meeting on when, on Friday of last week, and the group decision, which I was not in favor of, but the group decision was to lower the tier of service even further than what we had. I think it was the lowest one that we could have accepted that would have went to just one additional sixteen-hour truck in the county. And that cost, since they reduced the package price, that also reduced our costs. So, it went from six thousand to three thousand dollars, which is good because it's lower, but it's not good because we're not giving the number of service, the level of service that I think that we need in our community. So, I wanted to give the update for that and let you know it won't be six thousand, it will be three. And we will still keep it on the month-to-month, so that like you guys know what it is, but in the interim, we are working on some things to try to find some other collaborations that we can go with, whether that's through our own personnel, reaching out to Green County, and trying to see about them having a base locally. And then also, we're going to train it up. Train it up our own people. We're going to have CPR class, we're going to have ER team stuff, emergency response team, critical response team maybe from a community perspective and aspect, but nobody's going to come and say, look, there's no money to this thing. So, artists out there, so we just got to take care of ourselves until, until the next thing happens.
So, the county is pretty similar?
So, we got six thousand three. So, the other cities, we have Rock and Two.
Yes.
Are they going, they going to pay?
So, like I said, the other cities, I know we're going to pay our portion. I can't pay nobody else's portion, but that has to be, because that's all I got, the authority to do this. There were some communities that had some concerns because they just, they weren't able to have the resources, the county has a mayor's agreement, I think they're going to have to pay about twenty-seven, about seventeen thousand, seventeen-five per month. And so, we're going to do our part on it. I think the ambulance service is going to try to help us out some to bring in the wiggle room, but that's what, that's.
So, what, 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 if all the other cities are going to pay? Are we still going to pay?
So, there, the way that I think that the service is going to work, they're still going to, from now until September, we're going to see how this thing works and on a trial basis. But once the trial basis, then it'll be reevaluated in September after we have some data. And then look to see how it's just effective or not. Now, long-term, for me, this is not sustainable because it's just not sustainable. You ask them to come up with something else. We're already trying to make, do what we need to do as of what we got available. So, I'd rather answer the question, I think they're going to give us to September with what they got. And then look at it in September again and say, okay, yeah, this is working, I know this is not. Question? Yes. I wouldn't hear.
So, could you explain again about the real quick, a quick follow-up? Do you got twenty-four hour, twelve hour?
Yeah, so, we already have one twenty-four-hour ambulance service currently. The proposal that is given now will add us one additional sixteen-hour ambulance service for sixteen hours during the daytime from what I understand, which is when we get the majority of calls. It would not extend on the eight-hour side for the other twenty-four. So, it won't be two twenty-four hours. It'll just be one twenty-four-hour truck and one sixteen-hour truck with a paramedic.
And it's still a possibility that everything could be, you know, out on call and we still can be like, you know, two call, ain't nobody.
Yeah, so, the average call that we have in Alice, well, not Aliceville, sorry. Average call that we have in Pickens County is five point five calls per day. So, in order to make whatever they got is six, six hours, or six calls per day brings them at evening. When the hospital was open, they was making the six calls, now they're not making six calls. So, there's been a lag for the last two years in the call. So, normally, yes, but there's a bad accident, there's only two right now. I think somebody, somebody told. And so, of course, ambulance services is there. So, if something happens here, or maybe it's the ones that touch loose scam, I don't know. But if they're there, we, now, we just, that's where out. You know, at least now, you got another sixteen-hour unit. One of the other possibilities that we discussed was training up some of our local fire departments, local police departments, so that way they have first responder or paramedic access. And they're able to sustain life, maybe not transport, but hold them down until the ambulance can come and transport. So, that's what the premise was. The bill was six thousand of the package that we chose, I think, two twenty-four and a sixteen, which means two twenty-four-hour trucks all the time and one sixteen-hour truck. But that was deleted and I wasn't happy because Aliceville has the majority of the call, this southeast end has the majority of the call. So, we don't have as many options as they do on the northern end of town where they can go to DCH quickly and they can go, they can go to Baptist now, a little quicker. We got a little further route to go unless you go south to the, to Green. Another question, good question.
The problem with the call body is that people have lost interest in them, people have lost trust in them. Don't believe when they call, they're not showing us, they're taking them out in their own hands. After they get it through our bank, like us, that if I show up and come on, then the call body not pick that up. But you got to show the citizens and the people of the county that you provide the service and take all that. It really going to be levered and gone, so the trust volume is very down for the county service. My sister was one of them, all that. But then we finally got that evening, so, but then we could have been, went on with it. We've got pictures too, load up any cars, go on. This is a picture of the whole county, so how can a call volume go up if nobody trusts? You're going to show up. This is my opinion.
No, that's, that was one of the things that, that we emphasized to them and they understood it, but they don't have staff. So, their problem is they got four staff, four staff members who are trying to run a coast twenty-four hours a day, them every week. But you can do it, but it's not as effective as we need to be. And like I said, they're losing staff for paid reasons and others, and that was discussed with. So, I hope they're looking to see that once everybody agrees that this will help kind of lift up and give us some buffer room until we're able to find some long-term solution. Good question, great question, great points. Alright, that being said, we'll move on to, I got two things I didn't get on the demo and I couldn't get it. Get it out. Three, there's no, there's no action for it tonight. The council member, you've got a couple of social media policies for the city. We don't have one. It's something that we need to look at. Ethnomania, we can't do it on this means of just the first read, but this is something that we need to look at because, of course, that's the society that we live in, just putting parameters on things where people are working on behalf of the city average. We won't have any action on it, but our next work session will discuss if there's any thing to discuss and then we'll get it approved at the next council meeting. Item number, item number four is, does anybody have any question about the possible voting? Well, I mean, just read off, and when we get a chance to read it and go over and see what we got, and then discuss whatever we need to discuss. So, we can wait until we got a work session forward.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't really have to discuss it in the work session. I feel that this is a result of something that was posted on social media. Social media. Our page is our page. And people have.
This is for employees, not council members.
I need to, I need to, can you know? Yeah, the thing is freedom of speech. I just want to know.
Who is it for? No, this is for employees. If you look at most cities, and that's, this is something that was already, already written. Most cities have one if you look at the direction of where it's going even. Congress has tick-tock bands and everything that's coming out because of the dangers that some of social media posts. But again, this is for employees as far as when you on duty, working, that you're posting. This don't have nothing to do with a council member or any elected official. This is specifically employees and when you're on duty and.
Well, I, DSL come out when the situation come about this. The dog stuff coming, because you know, the social media not long, and the guy's been working with you for a long time. I feel like it should have been out, not waiting till now to be busy to come in town. That's what I'm saying. Seems like, I know, you say it ain't for us, but you say it for employees. What I'm saying, why you bringing it out now? You didn't, you didn't put it out a long time ago.
Okay, so, the reason I put it out now is because that's when it came out. It just happened to time with what it is. I think, I mean, it is what it is, the call is bad timing, whatever case it is. And number two, no, none of our employees have, what I said, done anything. And even if someone did it, that's their own personal opinion. You look at the page, you'll see that it simply is talking about when you're on duty, what you're doing should be reflective of, you can't speak on the behalf, and this is mainly for pages that are ran by other staff members. But this is mainly dealing like with the city of Aliceville page, the police department page, the chamber, chamber, that's not other, parks page, that's what they have to do. It's not dealing with anything, and then also, if you look in the employee handbook, it's already something that's there that talks about this in the employee handbook. It doesn't say social media because it wasn't up back then in two thousand twenty-one when it was updated. But this is just specifically about employees and that's really it. So, I know it just, the timing of it didn't line up, and I really don't care what anybody has to say personally, that's what you got. Say it, you got a mouth to say. If you were in politics, you can't take criticism somewhere. So, I mean, that just is what it is. So, saying all that, say, this ain't have nothing to do with that. It's just part of what I already established and going to put out. And that's why there's no action that's going to be on it today. Goes to work sessions, so that way.
And is what it, you just, is how it's going to be worded or is it going to say specifically for employees that the city of Aliceville?
That's what, that's, yeah, that's what it is. I mean, I can't, there, we can't legislate for, for grown people, right? We can't make people in the public do anything. This is only for city employees, which is just a derivative of what is in our employee handbook. So, it's not anything new per se, it's just adding social media to this because social media wasn't established. And a lot of the stuff that I got from this is out of the employee handbook that we already got. So, but this, this doesn't have nothing to do with any employee, and even if employee has an opinion, let's say that, let's say that the council decided to give everybody a million dollars, alright? And so, when they gave the employees a million dollars, somebody got on the, on the page and they said, I, I wish they gave us a million and one dollars. Guess what, they can do that. They stay right, they can speak. There's no, there's no issue with that, but the, and every, maybe, I said, this is not anything dealing with anything with what other process is again, that is what it is. This is specifically dealing with social media.
Yes. I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Uh, thank you on that. I have been wanting this already anyway. So, like, employees, talking to the press, no one has approved by the city, right?
Same way. Right, so, you can't speak on behalf of the city.
Right.
You can speak to the media, but you can't speak on behalf, the only people authorized, that's employees, to speak by, to speak on behalf of the city is really the police chief, you know, just right.
Right.
And, but as, as council members, I'll speak to the media anyways, I mean, there's no, I think there's, I don't know why I'm holding on that. But the only people who can speak on behalf of the city. Now, they can speak their personal opinion.
Right.
Right?
Why they run out, why they not, they not on duty?
Right.
Working.
Right.
Going to work, not the, you know, public relations. But that's why I, I, I have been wanting this, for years.
Alright, that's all. Good question. And still, still can't blow on it, I mean, we just have to wait until the next week for some policy and I want to still, so that way, you got some other ideas and want to strike through it or have some things to add or take away. That's the, that's the reason why, but it has to come up, have the media open it first and then unless you suspend it, we will without. Great discussion. Alright, that being said, the last thing that I, I apologize, I forgot to put on the agenda, we'll update it so that we have a reflection. But this month, we had, our last month, we had essay contest winners through for the Black History Month contest, and it was real easy to do this year because we only had three people that applied. So, that being said, our essay contest winners are first place. Give me if I missed your name, Miss Todra Carrington. Miss, second place is, Miss Kaylee Harkin, let's get her a hand. And second, and first, that was our first place essay contest winner and second place essay contest winner. Miss Carrington wrote about Megan Evans. She told stories about who Megan Evans was, and she did a great job on her writing and the people who judged said that yours was the best, so here's your first place prize, man. Congratulations. And our art winner, the K through three had art contest, and art winner for that is Miss Kristen Harkins. Kristen Harkins, so she's the winner for that, so let's get her a hand. Again, I want to continue to encourage our young people to be involved, be active, and look, look at good things and positive things that happen to write about. That being said, are there any questions about the bills on the council table? Any question about the bill? Not all in favor of playing the bills as presented to you today, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Finishing the ayes, aye, most carries. Item number, Department of what? Police Department, we'll have a police report right now. Street Department, Street Department, got anything? Fire Department, got anything? Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, great, Chamber of Commerce went for it last Tuesday. It was like ninety-eight people, which was one of the biggest ones we've had in, in three or four years. They were kind of, so that was great. So, thank you to our partners and our assistants, thank you to John and the whole museum for hosting. The Chamber of Call is just big enough for the almost a hundred people we had. Like I said, the extra tables, that was a good problem. Anyways, so, the new board members have rolled on, so if you see them, I'm going to try to call their names because I'm going to probably miss somebody. But congratulations to them, welcome to them. I'm really involved, but I'm still always being chambered, I'm still chambered, remember those times before, so happy to. If I was on that, that's all. And thank you Kat, I'm the director for such a great event. Dogwood Festival, just a reminder, it is so soon. It is May, May 3rd. May 3rd, we're bringing back the Dogwood Festival. Sometime in the morning, sometime in the afternoon.
May 4th.
May 4th on Friday. Oh, just kidding. One of those, May 4th, May 4th, thanks, I mean, May 4th. Be there May 4th, not May 3rd.
Alright, that'll work, thank you Kat.
Okay, I've got several things. First one, to remind everybody that the third annual Camp Alice Reenactment is on Friday, May 3rd and Saturday, May 4th. We'll be putting out a schedule with the activities coming up pretty soon. We're working on the liquor, temporary liquor license for the USO Dinner Dance. I submitted a letter yesterday. Unfortunately, I got the wrong form for rental, that has to be corrected. And thanks to Al Jean for straightening out the rental situation. We were panicked for a while there, but I really appreciate the help on that. Also, having some work done on the theater, there will be a movie on Friday night, the 3rd. It's a movie that came out in May of nineteen forty-three, it's a comedy this year. It's called More the Mary, and it has to do with the housing situation in Washington DC during the war. That movie would have been in theaters when the first prisoners arrived. That movie would have been in theaters when the first prisoners arrived. We're also having some things done inside the theater. I'm hoping that all the drapery across the front is going to be in place by the time the movie comes. We had a company from Atlanta working on it. They were the nearest ones that do that sort of thing. They sent somebody down yesterday to verify the mess, uh, measurements, and make sure that all the machinery that moves the drapery works and we're in good shape. Uh, I brought something else with me. I just kinda wanted to remind everybody, uh, some things about our museum and where people come from. This is the visitors book since, uh, January of this year. I just wanted to give you some ideas where people come from. And a lot of them come to Aliceville just to see the museum. While they're here, they buy gasoline, they visit our restaurants, so they're contributing to the local economy in that country. So just to give you some ideas where they came from. We've got, uh, I can't read the name of the city, somebody from Germany, Norco, California, Pendleton City, Ludwigsfeld, Germany, Wichita, Kansas, Ventress, Louisiana, Belmont, Wisconsin, uh, some from within Alabama, Tripoli, Wisconsin, Kansas City, Missouri, uh, Lake Crystal, Minnesota, Carthage, Mississippi, Wellsport, Texas, Brooklyn Park, Minnesota. Here's where it gets really interesting. South Korea, Turkey, Spain, Morocco, Belgium, China, and Japan. Uh, Jackson, Mississippi, Franklin, Tennessee. And just the day before yesterday, some people from Wentworth, New Hampshire. So we, they come from all over the place to see our museum. So it's really, uh, kind of our, um, that's Aliceville's, uh, a good attraction, brings a lot of people in from all over the place. And I kinda feel like ambassador sometimes when people come in. Yeah, they're, they're always very interested and we get a lot of good feedback. So it's something to where we draw them. Uh, wanted to mention one thing that I spoke to you earlier, we talked about earlier. We had one school group come last week. I'd really like to see Aliceville schools come again, but they had a great time last year. And on Monday, I had a group of forty-three from Hoover, uh, who also went to Angie's afterward. And I learned that a group of forty-three is way too much for one person to handle. But they were, it was a great group, they were very interested. And one of them commented to me, it was the best trip their, their history group has taken.
Wow.
I did, but your grandfather was busy.
What is the maybe, John?
Uh, it's called More the Merry.
The win.
Uh, it is, uh, six o'clock PM Friday night. That will be free.
Well, thank you so much for the hard work you put in behind the scenes and in front of the scenes. Uh, figure to them legal, literally, since you're talking about the theater as well as the museum. So thank you for what you do, and we're looking forward to, uh, to reenact the third annual and, uh, all the new things that are gonna come part of it. So, City of Alabama, and once we get confirmation on the alcohol license, we'll make sure we, uh, present that on our council. And I'm sure it'll pass on business like it will. Thank you, sir. Uh, I will move on to, anyone in the audience have anything today? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, please to the council. And we'll congratulate to our youth again. You know, I'd like to make a suggestion. Uh, the lights down on Main Street, that's wonderful. But if you can see where you can get anybody, like coming on down from East Flash, Detention, and from another place, the bobber top. See, you can get some lights down through there. Because at night, it's very dark down through there too. And even though we get our outfits, and we're getting a little scary or something, so we actually put that on skin.
Yes, ma'am. Um, that's good you pointed, that you, uh, pointed out and, and gave that suggestion. Um, the, we got a grant for eight hundred thousand dollars to rebuild the sidewalk, that's half grand. Um, so the project hasn't started. But one of the things that we wanna add on there is some type of additional lighting, um, to fix it really close to sidewalks. But if there's anything extra in that, then, uh, one of the plans is trying to put some extra light down there. You look, there's two old lights that's on the end of that from like the nineteen, whenever. Uh, it would be good to kinda maybe even restore those and get them back to, uh, LED shape so people can, uh, see it. Uh, but we will look at that and try and put, not try, get some light there. Not sure when, uh, cause then, you know, on that concrete, putting a power pole there and lights and all that stuff, they have to work out the distance on. But it is something that, uh, I think they included in their design package to, uh, when they redo the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, oh, commissioner, I'm sorry.
The commissioner.
Okay, alright, Sister Knowles.
Yeah, Sister Knowles. So on March the 30th, in partnership with, um, LG and City Park and Way, am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and Awareness, Folks and Outreach, which is a nonprofit organization, is a direct, I mean, I live to serve Belinda Creed and Tiger, Tiger Bob Ministry. Um, Tiger Bob, we will be sponsoring a community health fair. Um, on March the 30th, it's going to be from eleven to three. Um, free community event, yoga exercise class. We've been doing twenty-five dollar gift cards, giving away air fresheners, electric fans giveaway. We're going to have a free yoga and wellness class. It's from a, um, organization out of Tuscaloosa called Painted Lotus Yoga and Wellness LLC. And that'll be going from twelve to one, and she's bringing twenty-five nets with her. We will have mall walk-in service there, All of Us University, Alabama, Black Belt Community Foundation, AmeriKwell. We're working on some other vendors, hopefully there come, a health and wellness education center in rural Alabama prevention center, a voter registration booth to be set up, and a free healthy salad bar. So we hope everyone to come out. This is a free event, um, giving back to the community and to the people and sharing resources. And that's from eleven to three. Yeah, yeah, yes, you're welcome.
And that, and that's a part of, part of our, uh, part, like I said, we're, we're gonna partner with a lot of people because a lot of people got a lot of things going on, so we wanna be able to help what we can. So we will partner with them because this helps bear, it's gonna help us, for us. If we're healthier, then we don't have to worry about, uh, maybe getting sick as, as bad. Uh, but that being said, uh, thank you for partnering with us and helping to partner with all nonprofits in whatever way we can. Uh, and like I said, it may not be a building all the time. It may be, uh, staff, or it may be something else, but we will do what we can to partner with various organizations. Uh, so that's how things get done. Uh, it looks like.
Aliceville owners, if the national, uh, I don't know.
Yes. Uh, it looks like, uh, it looks like our, our two ladies that just walked in, Miss Kaylee and Miss Kristen, is that right? Alright, Miss Kaylee, Miss Kristen, I'll call them up. Congratulations to you guys. Kaylee, Miss Kaylee, and this is Kristen. Congratulations. You gonna give a challenge, just challenge someone? Oh, no! So what? Yeah, okay, please, Carl. Before y'all know it, I'm fixing to, uh. Uh, challenge woman, Bob?
No.
Yes, man, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I had a comment on.
Yes, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
I know my wife got with you at the Chamber banquet about it. I've talked to Rebecca about it. I wanna bring it up in front of the whole council. And it has to do with the situation of loose dogs running around in town. Uh, I live in, on Pine Hill Drive. It's gotten so bad over there that people are afraid to walk out in the street. My wife is afraid to go out in our front yard. Uh, she was attacked by a large dog when she was a little girl. Her grandmother saved her from serious injury. But we don't need that sort of thing going on in Aliceville. Um, driving home yesterday on Third Avenue, there was a pack of dogs just running all over the place. It's getting to where it's, it's scary to walk around on our streets. I understand the situation with the county, but we really need to work on some kind of solution within our community. I'm sure you all remember the little boy who was attacked. Uh, we don't need that to happen again. Just thought I'd bring that.
Yes, sir.
I just got one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Juneteenth festival, festivities. Will this be an all-day? I got some vendors that's inboxing me about coming, but our Juneteenth is also Greensburg Juneteenth. And they gonna be an all-day thing. So they wanna know, will Aliceville be an all-day, all-day thing, or will it be just happening?
As soon as the planning coordinator, if you know, will, will tell you, normally we have it from two, no, from ten. Uh, normally the gospel is more, it's about ten, and then it'll roll on over until, uh, two to three. And then this year, we were talking about extending it, uh, to about six or something like that. But again, I don't wanna state yes and then say what you said, that, that everybody, you said it, council, yeah. Um, the goal is to extend it to that, this year. That's what we talked about when we had a planning meeting, in, uh, planning meeting in January. Um, but at our follow-up meeting, it should be the next two weeks, we'll know exactly what.
Thanks, that, that, they, they inboxing me, so that's.
No, you fine, that's, no problem.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, that one, Bob, sorry. Oh, okay. Uh, this one is, uh, women, history month. Uh, women history, so, huh? It helped, too? I'm about to get, okay, help, but it's separate all the history things of women did. And also, I found out something about the stray dog thing. We have a problem back here at Kindred Field. And, uh, what people was doing, they were feeding them dogs. I didn't say y'all did them, they were feeding them.
They are, that's the problem. People aren't feeding them.
Yeah, yeah, they were feeding them, they was totally, feeding them, the stray dogs. No, I know, but we had to probably kind of finish with it. Yeah, we totally stopped, you know? I was just making, I was feeding them, like every shoot. Yeah, it's all that, but, um, I'm sure.
Well, mine's where, where we at right here. Ain't nobody dropping them off. They belong to the man behind me. They ain't been dropped off. Yeah, Scott, him.
We got several stray dogs up there by me.
They all over the city.
They don't come on that, me, I got four myself.
Well, he goes running around. He's all running around.
Like I said, we want, we want that dog in the big house, um, second house for me. Several dogs, really.
Well, my neighbor, which is Miss Carol, or the shopper guy, shopper guy. Her mother live right next door to me. Her mother do not come out the house. Her yard be towed up with garbage. Every time somebody put it, garbage, down for the dogs, people, people to pick up. And it's not fair to her. Now, when I was living in, on, on Old Carroll Road, I had the sheriff to serve me on warrant, I mean, on notice. If my dog be, be put on the chain, they was gonna risk my son. So we give him tons of slack on the wrist. That's why them dogs keep running. Now, if they belong to him, he need to have them in the pen. I mean, it's just that simple. Mine's is in the pen, I don't let mine's outside of my gate. And it's not fair that I gotta walk out my front door and boo-boo all in the yard.
So, so the, so the city does, the city does, there's some dog they, they put asleep because, uh, they had so many side textures of. Uh, and I, though our county commissioner's here, as you know, my, my default answer is that the county commissioner is the one that is responsible. I, I love to hear the comments and, and I, and we gonna do it, and I'm working on some, I'm working on some stuff behind the scenes, and I don't wanna say that loud, cause if I say that loud, then it get killed before it even start. So, I mean, I'll just be a hundred percent with you. So we working with someone, they're trying to make something happen with it. But in the meantime, like I tell people all the time, do whatever you have to do to protect yourself. And whatever that is, you fill in the blank, uh, until we get some type of resolution. It's, it's a work in progress. I wish things could happen instantly, but unfortunately, sometimes it just don't. Um, and like I said, I would say also, go to the county commissioner meeting that, uh, what time is it?
It's, um, it's changed. It's, um, tomorrow, our admin is from eight, it starts at eight thirty, and then our, huh?
The commission meeting.
Uh-huh, the commission meeting, and then our meeting starts at eight. But we haven't had, you know, cash fair comes talking about, you know, the dogs and, and, um, and trying to build a shut, we just don't have funding. For it, you know, it's a funding thing, everything is a funding thing, but it is about money. And even my house, I went to go out my yard a couple weeks ago on the side of my house, and I had one growl at me, and, and I'm just gonna be, I had to run back into my house because I have my grandson blessing me on the front. And I was on, I had to run back into my house to go and get my, my, my pistol. Because he was growling and started coming from across the next door, walking through the bush to come at me, and it was just out of nowhere.
Well, then he's gone, that's not the solution. Then he's gone.
It's not the solution, but do you let a dog attack you and bite you?
Well, no, 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 I'm just saying, that is not, that cannot be our community solution.
That's not gonna be our.
You're not walking that south, that's on your hands.
No, I didn't say that.
No, I know, I know, but by the time you.
I'm not telling you to walk out the door, but you do what's best for you and, and your family.
You very much missed energy with me. I'm saying, just like me and he go, walk out the door, you might catch a pistol in your hand.
No, you don't.
You see a dog, it's just as scary as you are, it runs off, you go back, and I can tell.
Alright, so in the, in the interest of.
Well, hey, you'll get your pistol, and I do the same thing, my sister, but I'm saying, that's not our learned, learned solution.
In the interest of the women, we're gonna, we're gonna get along.
Right now, yeah, I don't have a person.
I'm, I'm in the debate, I know, I, like, I was like that, all the other things, I got a dog food. But I say that to say, we gonna fix it, it's. And I, I believe that it's a solution. My, in the, uh, work session, after we have, we are gonna have a work session after this meeting. The only thing that I have is, like I said, I'll be super brief. Uh, everybody saw that, that we are getting a dog gender mark, and so, uh, I love the commentary that everybody give. That's what the goal is, that's why I put it out there. If I was scared of what people gonna say, I wouldn't put stuff out. So I say, encourage, continue to give information, continue to give back feedback. That's what it's designed for. When I see it, I comment on it most of the time, sometimes it's on my face, uh, some other people's face, sometimes I will. I said it to say, everybody got my number, I send it out to everybody. I've got calls, some for, some against, but it's another business in Aliceville. The new, the biggest question that I got is, will the old dog gender leave? Yes, old dog will go, but it'll be a larger twelve thousand square foot building, uh, that'll be located south. Uh, what I would think is, what I want through is, and this is the, this is what I wanna challenge Aliceville with is, we know that this building is gonna be vacant down the road, right? We know that. So we need to start thinking about what do we want in this building down the road? The people who own that building are the, uh, the hubs, I believe, the hub corporation. So that's the person that you need to get in contact with if you're interested in opening a business in that building because it's gonna be vacant, and that's an opportunity. I saw people say something about steakhouse, I saw something about a bowling another, I saw something about, uh, a skating rink, I saw some. It's unimaginable, it's, it's, uh, sky's the limit. So, but anybody can bring any business they wanna bring into the city of Aliceville. So don't think that we can stop, or we can break everything in. We depend on the citizens and independent business owners to provide services and resources to the community outside of the normal service that we have. So I wanna challenge Aliceville to think about what is gonna go in that building? What do we want in that building? With that being said, I asked for motion to go into work session, and we're not gonna come back. Uh, so after the, before you guys are, that's what you two ladies. Um, but that being said, that there are motions to go in the work session, second one.
Who made the first one?
Been moved the second bit, although the paper let it be known, I say aye? Any opposed? In the chair, I say, most carries. Thank you, thank you for coming. Uh, ladies, y'all come in, please.